The Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via the Zoom calling phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. Tracy, may we please have your call?
Yes, good morning Supervisor Madrone.
Present.
Supervisor Bone.
Yep.
Supervisor Bass.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Morning and Supervisor Wilson will be absent today.
All right, thank you very much. So do you have a flag you can pull up for us?
I do.
All right, well, please stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's really a perfect flag, Tracy, considering we're here talking about winter storms.
Right, I know, perfect.
All right, so for those of you who are attending, if this is your first time, when you want to speak on this item, you press star nine to raise your hand. You will be asked to speak and you'll press star six to unmute yourself and then you'll have three minutes. At where you have three seconds left, you'll hear this sound. And that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up. So with this, I think we can actually go right to the consent counter. I'm Ms. Hayes first, sorry, I've got too many agendas to be on my desk. All right. So we have one item. You guys literally, okay. So Sheriff Hansel, are you on? I mean, we do have a consent counter, but I'd like to ask, I guess, does that mean I'm pulling it, Alicia?
What was that?
I said, this sound is pulling it. I just wanted to ask Sheriff Hansel to give a brief description. I know, we know all, I don't know why we're here, but I think it could be useful if he was able to share a little bit.
Yeah, then you would like to pull the item for discussion.
Okay. Pulling the item for discussion then. So with that, our one item being pulled. Sheriff, can you tell us more about this item?
Yes, good morning. Thank you for having this special meeting as the declaration of a local emergency. On December 26th, we had unprecedented winter storm that hit Humboldt County. And it left a lot of devastation due to the tremendous amount of snow and wind and in a short period of time, mostly central or located in eastern or eastern areas of the county. The biggest impacted really are the areas of Hoopa and Willow Creek. And so we had a lot of issues with downed trees, with downed power lines, utility issues. And we had initial damage assessments that were coming in into the millions of dollars at that point in time. With consulting, our OES manager, Ryan Derby, the, all the CAL FIRE units and fire units on the ground, utilities, public works, CAL Trans, we decided to forward with declaring a local emergency. That's, that paves the way for state and federal resources to be, to be deployed to Humboldt County and to assist us with, with this emergency situation. We rapidly saw that CAL Trans got the emergency mutual aid essentially into our county to clear up the roadways, to make sure that 299 corridor was opened up, working on 96, looking at alternate routes all over for debris removal as well as snow removal. And so, very, very proud of our team, especially with Public Works, CAL Trans, CAL FIRE, and also Red Cross for setting up a shelter in Willow Creek to assist the residents of Willow Creek and Hoopa. So at this point in time, it's up to your board to ratify the local emergency. And we are still tracking costs. And again, initial damage assessments are coming in. We had to give a report to CAL OES this last week. My OES manager, Ryan Derby, is on. He can talk more specifically about the initial damage assessments and we can talk about the next steps. We also can talk about, there's been a lot of information, a lot of people asking about, what do we do now that we have all of these downed trees and private property? Are there any state resources available to come in and assist with, with private property? And so if we want to address that, we can address that now or afterwards. But, but it's definitely something that I would like to address at this meeting.
All right, thank you. I'd say, go ahead and continue addressing unless the supervisor has a question.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion in a second. So Sheriff, it sounded like you kind of wanted to share a little more information, though, is that correct?
Sure, so our number one goal and job here in, in, in government and, and law enforcement at CAL OES is to make sure that, that all the public roadways and right of ways are open to the public so they can access those areas. We also, for, for assisting people in medical emergencies or any kind of emergency, you know, we deploy our county resources to make sure that roadways or private property is cleared so we can get emergency personnel into private property. But that's really where it ceases as far as local, state and federal resources being utilized to help out private property owners. So, you know, people have been asking, can we send in the National Guard to help out with, with debris cleanup on private property? And the answer really is no. We do not deploy CAL FIRE resources or, or CCC on private property. The state doesn't want to take on the liability of coming in and, and going into private property to help out with, with cleanup and those kinds of things. People have to look at their homeowner's insurance, their insurance, work it out with, with their insurance companies to, to try and clean up those areas and try to help out with that. Now, the county, in the springtime, we can look at, you know, assisting with, you know, with, with help coordinating some of that debris cleanup. And we can look at ways of gathering communities together to help each other out. You know, we can help even coordinate some of that stuff, but actually getting state, federal and county resources on private property right now to do any of that stuff, that's just not, it's not going to happen. So I was just on the phone with the CAL OES chief, Mark Paisen, this morning discussing this aspect. This is, this is something that, that is going along throughout the state right now. As you know, there's been unprecedented snow in the Tahoe Basin. Nevada County is looking at unprecedented snow removal. And the same question would have been offered, you know, by the local residents there as well. So can, can CAL National Guard be utilized? So that is a last resort resource. And, and so they are actually deployed in other parts of the state for removing debris on public roadways, making sure there's accessibility to different people within the state. But, but again, right now, we can't utilize them in Humboldt County to remove private property debris. So Ryan Derby's on, he can also discuss the, some of the initial damage assessments and that kind of thing. So I'd like to turn it over to Ryan at this point.
I did want to say thank you to Ryan for all the updates. It's been really appreciated.
All right, well, thank you Sheriff and Sheriff Bass. So last week, we submitted our initial damage estimate, or IDE, to CAL OES. And that's largely based on information that we gather from field personnel and through the online form that we have on our county website. The initial damage estimate that we submitted had an estimated $5 million, $50,000 worth of property damages to homes. We put in about $200,000 worth of impacts to businesses with images to eight outbuildings totaling about $100,000. Largely, the, the cost that the county accrued is in what we call category B expenditures or emergency protective measures. That's going to be overtime costs, acquisition of materials and equipment. And we estimated about $310,000 in that category B expenditure, both for our sheriff's deputies that were out in the field, OES staff, public works that were working on clearing roads and doing emergency calls for service. And then largely, the other category that we submitted is in category A or debris removal. And that's going to be debris removal on county maintained roads, whether we're, you know, moving trees, hauling, hauling that debris off. And as of late last week, when we submitted that report, we hadn't received any reports of damages to roads or bridges. A lot of that's going to be assessed once the snow melts and we actually get a clearer picture of what those road conditions look like. But I've been in contact with Public Works and we'll be getting updates on that. Really with this initial damage estimate, it's exactly that, it's an estimate. So we submit a proclamation of emergency and request CDAA funding. We then have three days from the date of requesting CDAA to submit this IDE, our initial damage estimate. So in reality, three days after an incident occurs, we have no idea what the, the long-term cost is going to be or what the, the true cost is. And we'll have opportunities over the coming weeks and months to adjust that to the true dollar amount. But right now, just preliminary estimates are largely on private property homeowners. And our message from OES, from Sheriff's Office, is for those affected individuals to reach out to their insurance, you know, and start getting those claims submitted and taking pictures so they can work towards recovery. Largely, what I'm focused on this week is working with the community out there to find some green waste facilities where they can take their, their downed trees, their brush to. And then, as the sheriff alluded to, in the coming weeks and months, we'll be working on some cleanup and chipper days. So ahead of fire season, which is only six months away now, we can start getting some of that defensible space maintained and make that community whole again. But that's all I have to report today unless there are additional questions.
I see Supervisor Bushnell has a question.
I don't have a question, I have a comment if I could.
And then Supervisor Madrone.
I just wanted, thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to really thank Ryan and Sheriff Hansel. The Southern Humboldt area was hit with power outages for many days. And I was able to get a warming system area set up with the use of a generator that was loaned by the Sheriff's Department. And also, all the information that Ryan sent me and I was able to pass on. And Allison from PG&E also, just for keeping us all updated, I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate all the help and assistance that I was given in the Southern Humboldt area. And, and also, you know, a lot of people from the Willow Creek area reached out to me and I was able to coordinate for some of those residents. So I just want to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department.
All right, thank you. And Supervisor Madrone?
Yeah, I also want to say thank you to everybody, just like Supervisor Bushnell did. And wanted to thank her for taking a couple of calls when my phone was malfunctioning and I was in the hospital on Wednesday. But at any rate, that's besides the matter. Bottom line is that people performed amazingly, Public Works crews, just amazing efforts. You know, this is not just a normal disaster where a few trees went down. I spent a couple of days in Willow Creek Hoopa area this week. And there are literally tens of thousands of trees down on private land and I suspect on Forest Service land as, as well. So this is not a small affair. And most, many people have lost their insurance because of all the fires. They no longer are being given insurance. I've been able to help people get insurance by providing CAL FIRE letters, say, for instance, in West Haven, because we have the CSA four and we have year-round coverage with CAL FIRE. The battalion chief there provides a letter. And we've been able to get some people's insurance reinstated. But out in the Willow Creek area, there isn't a CAL FIRE station and all we have is the volunteer departments. And it is a nightmare out there. You know, we just went through the Knob Fire and now we have this snowstorm that's brought down tens of thousands of trees. And this, the amount of work that is needed to bring these neighborhoods back into a safe position is beyond the ability of these communities to respond. So without the help of significant resources, we're looking at basically a massive fuel hazard leading to more fires directly in the communities coming this spring and summer. And so we've got three or four months. I wish it was six months, Ryan, but you know, come April, May, we're probably right back into the fire season again. And if we don't spend the next three months with a crew of 100 people, we are going to have another disaster on our hands. We know this, this is not just a, well, maybe, this is an absolute. And so I had been reaching out to the National Guard and to the CCCs. And Sheriff Hansel called me the other day. And again, I apologize for perhaps getting a little bit out in front there. This is new for me, I haven't dealt with too many disasters. And I recognize that communication is everything. And so I appreciated the call, wasn't trying to get in front of anything. But the bottom line is, without the CCCs or the National Guard or some sort of a very significant level of crew and resources, we are not going to be able to get out in front of this looming disaster this summer. And you know, the CCCs work on private lands all the time, all of their watershed work, their fisheries restoration work. It's almost all done on, on private land, on green diamond land, on small ranch lands and other property owners all over the county. I had a conversation with Rachel, the head of the Fortuna CCC. And they are more than willing to muster crews to help with this effort. But they simply need a request from us as a board, as a county, to sign an agreement with OES to provide state resources to be deployed in these areas on private land. They can absolutely do this. So I don't mean to refute what you said, Sheriff Hansel, but you know, it is possible. And I would, I know we can't do it today. It's not on the agenda as an action item. But I would like to request that staff come back to us with detailed options of how we request the help from the CCCs and/or the National Guard so that we can help these communities recover from this incredible disaster, not only that just happened, but as I said, is looming for this summer. So I would like to get support from this board to agendize that item for consideration of an action item at the nearest possible future date to direct the Sheriff's Department, Public Works and OES to work with the CCCs and the National Guard to see how we can bring in these resources on private land. Because without this, we're basically just sitting back and letting another disaster happen. And I know nobody wants that to occur. But this, they don't have insurance and frankly, insurance only handles the damage to the home, the deck, the fence. It doesn't pay for the cleanup of the property, even if you have insurance. It does not pay for that. And like I said, spending half the day up in the Bigfoot subdivision and in the terrorist community in Willow Creek, the damages are so widespread. There is so much debris and material everywhere. We need to get in there and we need to let people know how we can help them. And I'm, I'm just getting overwhelmed with requests for that. So that's that part of it. We also, I hope, will set up an information center. I was talking to Ryan about this in the Willow Creek area soon with the resources and people that have information, be able to inform property owners where they might be able to get assistance, where they might be able to get aid to deal with their, the disaster impacts, et cetera. So that's an urgent need out there in the Willow Creek Hoopa area, is to get that information center set up so that people can, can know how to get assistance. So I won't say it again, we all know how bad this thing is. And Willow Creek got hit particularly hard, much more than Hoopa even. And something about the cold air pocket there in Willow Creek enhanced the snow delivery in Willow Creek and down the South Fork Road into Trinity County. I'm getting a lot of calls from Western Trinity County as well. You know, once again, disasters, fires, snow, they don't respect county boundaries, right? I was glad to see that Trinity County also declared a disaster. And I'm assuming, Ryan, that that was included in the governor's declaration, both Humboldt and Trinity County?
No.
Is that, is that correct?
No.
No?
I think, I think he's asking Ryan, just, I think Supervisor Bone is accurate, but Ryan, can you explain?
So Trinity County, from what I understand, declared on Thursday, which was after the governor had issued his. So as far as I'm aware, they were not included in the state's proclamation. But as we've seen with other incidents, that could always be modified to include additional counties.
Yeah, absolutely. And big shout out to PG&E and all the crews, right, tree trimming, everybody else. You know, over in Trinity, they're actually delivering generators. PG&E is delivering generators to people's homes with fuel in Western Trinity. I had a bunch of people I ran into yesterday that got that assistance. And I want a big shout out to Allison here locally, our PG&E liaison, working tirelessly through the holidays, through the weekend, late at night, doing everything she can to bring care packages to people with blankets, food, water, and just the crews, pulling in more crews from all over the state, from Oregon, wherever we can find them to come into that Willow Creek area. Because people are still out of power and someone may not have power for another week and a half or two weeks. So being out of electricity for three weeks is an extreme hardship. And many of these people are seniors. Willow Creek has a higher proportion of seniors per capita than anywhere else in Humboldt County. So it, you know, it's a particular heavy hit to these people who can't even handle picking up a five gallon gas can, can to fuel their generator, right? So we're in a world of hurt and I, I'm going to be in touch with you, Ryan, and Billy Moore in great detail several times a week to try and figure out what we can do. But I would like to, at whatever point is appropriate, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion on a future action item on an agenda. Because I know today, we're just declaring this disaster. And I, I'm not sure that I can take that action here today, if I'm correct on that, Madam Chair.
I don't think so. I would ask Alicia, isn't this something, even though this is coming out of the Sheriff's Office, since Supervisor Madrone is interested, could he not put that on under items brought forward by supervisors? So I'm, I'm kind of asking Alicia, what's the best way to approach?
You mean for a future agenda item is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe I can take an action today, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. You can't take action today because it wasn't agendized. And I think we can work with the sheriff on, on how best to bring that forward. It can either be a sheriff's item or a board-sponsored item.
Okay, sounds good. So I don't think we need to then take an action. I would like to request that, however that's best brought forward. All right, thank you very much, Madam Chair and CIO.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell and then, or the Sheriff, your hand is up too. It blends into the wall. Did you, I didn't know, Sheriff, if you had an answer to some question you heard?
Yeah, I did, I just, I appreciate the enthusiasm and the willingness and to want to help. I know as, as a Board of Supervisors and, and reporting to your constituents that it's, you know, it's hard not to, to want to get involved and to try to ask for resources and that kind of stuff. So I appreciate the phone call on Saturday with Supervisor Madrone. And so how this works with CAL FIRE or, and with, with CAL National Guard is that as an OES director, as the OES manager here, and we get requests and resource requests from different entities within Humboldt County. If CAL FIRE requested CCC to come up with debris removal, we would evaluate that request and we would push that on to the state. So that has not happened. So as a county, as a sheriff, I am not asking for CCC to come in because I will not coordinate with them at this point in time. If the Community Service District, if Willow Creek Fire, if they had a resource request, they could push that resource request through our OES and we could see what we could do to try and fill that. But, you know, again, when you order up a state agency, you have to have someone there coordinating it. You have to have someone there that's there to assume responsibility over that state agency and with debris removal and that kind of stuff. With the amount of debris removal throughout, throughout the county and with all the different roadways that still need to be cleaned up and, and those kinds of things, those are the kinds of things that we're trying to prioritize at this point in time. And again, the National Guard is a, is a last ditch effort. It's a last resource that, that we would have to request once we've exhausted all other mutual aid options. And, and so, and again, this, this is a, this is a limited resource and other areas around the state are, are definitely using that resource that, that have greater needs than Humboldt County at this point in time. Everything you're talking about Supervisor Madrone is a valid concern. You know, I just don't want to get ahead of ourselves in getting, deploying resources where, you know, we can push this down the road a little while and making sure that we have everything there. We can still work on green waste, we can still work on some, some helping community coordination. But again, that's going to be, the Hoopa Valley that makes those requests is going to be the Community Service District, Willow Creek Fire, that someone there on the ground that's going to help coordinate some of those, some of those things. So we don't just have people showing up, willing to help without really any coordination. So, but we will definitely, definitely have that in the future and wait on those requests.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah. And I know when you say push it down the road, you don't mean not deal with it. And I agree, you know, right now, chippers and green waste, we don't nearly have enough chippers, frankly speaking, to deal with what's going on in Bigfoot subdivision, terrorist neighborhoods, et cetera. We could use chippers for several weeks right now. And I doubt that Public Works has those resources. Now, as I understand it, having had the declaration declared, once we certify that today, along with the, the state and the governor doing that, these costs would all be reimbursed. Not only the CCCs, Rachel said, their costs would all be covered through the disaster declaration. We just have to request those services. And the coordination of those services would also be covered by the disaster in terms of reimbursement. Well, that's great, but I understand you also still have to have that personnel, frankly, available to do that. So I did meet with Willow Creek Volunteer Fire, meeting with Hoopa and the CSD. And I will forward to them that they need to make these requests. And I believe you'll see those requests coming in ASAP to do that. And I certainly have a lot of time on my hands that I can put out there on weekends and other things to try and help with coordination and other things. But I know you really, you need full-time staff. I've also put in a call to Tom Mattson at Public Works because frankly, that immediate work with chippers, green waste, I think we can do a lot of coordination with the Public Works Department. And they were incredible out there in the Bigfoot subdivision where Virginia has a house as well. I mean, just a complete disaster in that subdivision, just, I mean, homes with trees through them, people wandering around in shock. You can barely even drive through the roads, but Public Works did get most of them open. So I just want to figure out how to bring aid and at least bring information to people sooner than later. Because that's, right now, people just don't have a clue where they're going to be able to get help. So if we can get the information stream going and chippers and green waste, that is, I agree, the first short-term, immediate needs. And I'll work with those other entities, as you suggested, Sheriff Hansel, to get those requests coming in so that we can get that process started. And if the Cs can handle it, great. But frankly, from what I've seen, it's even going to overwhelm their crews, right? And so that's, I do think it's a last ditch thing with the National Guard, frankly. But we'll, we'll follow process and take the steps and do everything we can to help these communities. And I know there are people all over the county that experienced lots of, lots of problems. It's not just Willow Creek and Hoopa, but they got hit particularly hard. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell and Bone.
Thank you. I just, I don't want to forget to thank Public Works. We had a huge snow load in the Southern Humboldt area on the Alder Point Roads and the Shelter Cove Roads and, and trees down, and those guys were out there. I seen pictures from the Eel Rock, Fruitland Ridge, Fort Siree Ranch area, just incredible effort from Public Works to keep those roads open and plowed. And it was pretty amazing. So I just really want to make sure to thank our own guys from Public Works tremendously.
Thank you and Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, same thing. And I'm glad Supervisor Madrone got his phone fixed because I was helping quite a few friends over there and Public Works and PG&E was extremely helpful for us over, up over Honeydew, Panther Gap, that area. We, our road was closed, everybody's road was closed. But the main thing we have to remember, and I appreciate our Sheriff bringing this up, we can't fix it all today. We have to plan, move forward. We can't just go up there and start chipping. We got to figure out where the chips are going to go, they're a fuel load. So we're going to have to figure out where all this wood waste goes. And that's a good point. I've made some calls up in Willow Creek. We might have a yard where we can take green waste to temporarily and then it'll all be sorted in one area, little things like that. So, and we're doing the same thing out in Honeydew, that area. I was out and about almost all weekend and it raised some havoc, but we'll be fine. The next three days are going to be telling, we have high tides. We, I get to plan that now. Yesterday, we had a king tide and we had some flooding issues on lower level. Now we're going to have some rains. But I don't think we can underestimate what Public Works, what all public safety. It was, it was quite amazing. Ron Richardson, the area manager out of down south from PG&E, came up and made time to meet with Carl Shonifer and Allison to meet with Michelle and I. And he went up to Willow Creek. And I'm sure if Steve was up there, he probably ran into him. But he was up there for a couple of days to take a look at all the images. They've got, I think, I just read 45 crews up there working, or 19 crews and 45 vegetation crews. So they're doing quite a bit. So it's, the hard part's over. Now we got a little bit of cleanup to do and everything else. And I think they've got the, the numbers of people without power down again today. So hopefully, we can move forward. But I think we can't underestimate how much that our Public Safety and our own Public Works Crew did. They, they went above and beyond. Steve was always on the call, thanked the sheriff, and had quite a few talks with Ryan. And again, can't say enough about Ryan and getting the information out. So we got a pretty good crew out there working for us. And I think we should recognize it every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. Your hands still up. Did you have another comment?
No, just forgot to put it down. Sorry about that.
Right. It's, it's January. Supervisors or Madron is getting the swing again.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Supervisor Bone and Bushnell for helping. You know, as people know, when we can, we jump in and help all over the county. And really appreciate the backup and the support that you both provided there. Much appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, we will go to public comment. There had been a hand up earlier. So we're a public comment. Hands not going up. So I believe we'll go back to the board. Whoops. All right. This is the one time in January that I'm going to let you go back. I, I do see one hand up. Got to get, we're all kind of a little bit out of the practice, I think. And welcome, you have three minutes. Press star six.
So I get one time in January because your technology doesn't allow me to get back on because it had said my hand was up before, so I had to re-raise. Anyway, I did wish to make comment. And I do hope that people will be given slack regarding hands up and down on this thing. Your staff has problems with it and so do we. I really, really am glad, you know, that, that we did have so many people contributing here. Public Works and everybody at county does have a really good team. PG&E appears to have the kind of team and the organization that we need to develop in Humboldt County. And I'm a little bit disappointed that this special meeting wasn't held and the same communication didn't happen on the 28th. Another special meeting, it would have been on that Tuesday. Having waited so long for things to come forward, a lot of these ideas could have been brought forward and been worked. There are people out there without power. There are people out there now without firewood to heat their homes. There are people out there now where their driveways, they can't get in and out. And regarding the insurance thing, a lot of, like, supervisor Madron did a heck of a job of telling about insurance. People I know out there have been lucky to get insurance. The last thing they can do now is to go ahead and make a claim unless they totally lose their house in a fire or something like this, totally gone. Otherwise, when that happens, they will have been dropped from the insurance policy. So there is, there is no backup for insurance out there. I'm quite disappointed that the people out there can't get help. It sounds like they could get help to clear the roads for health, safety and welfare. I strongly support moving forward with Supervisor. Just to let you know, I'm kind of putting a challenge out there. I communicated with Steve over the weekend. He said he was having a hard time getting gas for these people. So I donated a small amount, $200. I told Steve, you know, I'm going to send him a check for the 200. But he was not only serving Humboldt County, but Trinity County. And this, this is rural out there. People are tough, but they're not tough regarding this. Biggest thing, your estimate is so, so low regarding fuels reduction out there. It's unbelievable. We are looking at probably ending up with a major fire. There's no way in, in a whole year, we can remove this stuff that's going to cause a fire. I just don't think we were really ready for this. And that's, that's my, my thing. These, there should have been plans. There should have been backup. There should have been ways these things happen. I know you're doing the best you can now. It's all 2020 hindsight, but I always say, learn from your mistakes. And I think this has been a mistake, how this has been handled. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on this particular topic. And of course, we want to make sure all the bookkeeping is done correctly, that actual costs are used, not other costs that would normally be cost as far as other things on this. Otherwise, we'd be cooking the books, wouldn't we? So let's avoid that. Let's make sure our requests are legitimate. They're spotted and taken care of as far as going forward. So we don't lose future funding. So thank you for my opportunity to speak today on Monday.
All right. Thank you. We'll go back to the board. Supervisor Madron, I do see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. One last item. I was speaking with Mari Wilson, our tax assessor. And there is a program available to property owners, private property owners, to do what's called a calamity damage reassessment of their property. So, you know, what I was seeing yesterday was literally that people's property values temporarily have plummeted, right? With all this massive debris all over the place and, and damage, et cetera. And so there are forms on the county's website that you can go to under the assessors tabs. And it's a calamity damage assessment. And you can basically do an assessment to identify how much, how much lower your property is valued at this point in time because of all the damage. And then when you submit that, your property tax would be reduced for the period of time that it takes to fix the, the problems, clean up the damage and bring your property back to the value that it was at before the disaster. So that is another resource that's available out there to private property owners. I wanted to share. And thank you, Assessor Wilson, for sharing that information. You know, it's just one more tool. All of these tools matter. And just trying to figure out how to get help to the private landowners. That's super complicated process, right? But we're making headway. And again, thank you, everybody, for all your help.
Thank you. So we do have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions, comments?
So Chair Bass, if I could just ask, Supervisor Bone had made the motion to approve the resolution. But the staff recommendation is actually to ratify the emergency proclamation. Is that the motion you?
Exactly. Sorry.
And that's fine. And Supervisor Bushnell, are you okay with that motion?
Yes, please.
Great. So a roll call vote would be Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Okay. Passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was all the work we had on this agenda item. So we will be back tomorrow. But at this point, whoops, we'll adjourn.